Good evening. I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to work, and please stand for our invocation of good.
There's lots happening in the midst, and I hope I can incorporate that in our prayers and petitions. Create of all persons and things, the source of our wisdom. Guide us who come to do the business of the city. With gratitude, we acknowledge those who teach and lead the children in our schools. We acknowledge our request for healing for Dawn, and for Lindsay, and for others for whom this is a time of crisis. We pray for the Williams family in the time of this loss and the grief that they are experiencing. Now, this National Day prayer, which we acknowledge, and we also ask for God's continued blessing on our country, our state, and on this community. That our common life reflects a fairness to all persons and gives glory to the eternal Father of all. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just give them the roll, please.
Kerry Hodge, Ward 1, here. Jay Stepp, Ward 2.
Here.
Louis Tonsmire, Ward 3.
Here.
Lindsay McDaniel, Ward 4. Diane Tate, Ward 5.
Here.
Lori Prout, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you, Connie. First order of business tonight is the approval of our council meeting minutes from the April 16th meeting. And council, you've had these welcomed and advanced up tonight. Chairman, entertain any additions, edits, corrections, or if there are none, a motion would be in order.
Mayor didn't see any corrections or additions, make a motion to approve.
I'll for a second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. I do want to take one point of privilege, as Mr. Archer likes to joke all the time and say, "I'm the man." I seriously doubt that, but in this case, I'm going to pretend I'm the man. And we do have an item on the agenda listed D2 regarding prohibited parking, an amendment to our ordinance. That item, I'm going to table for this evening. It is a first reading with ordinance. We'll take that first reading up at our second meeting in May. That'd be on the 21st, if I'm not mistaken. So if there's anybody here that was here for that particular reason, I want to respect your time. You're certainly welcome to stay. But I do want to let you know, we're not going to be taking action, or we're not even going to be discussing that prohibited parking amendment to the ordinance this evening. So, that being said, we'll move on to the recognition of our system Teachers of the Year. Certainly, our city is proud of what we do as a city, and also with our separate city school system. And we have four different Teachers of the Year from the schools, and I want to recognize them tonight. What I will do is I will read the resolution that is created for each of you, and then I will present them to you individually. I'm not going to read the same thing four times. I think y'all will get the note. And I'll just, I'll read this one. It simply says that whereas this person has been named the Teacher of the Year at their respective school, their personal dedication, sincere concern for quality education, has made them an asset to the school system, and whereas their leadership has provided a vital service for the children of Cartersville, and where it is the desire of the city of Cartersville to honor this most valuable teacher, now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and city council of Cartersville that because of their dedication and excellent performance of service, that this means be taken to honor them for being selected as Teacher of the Year at their respective school. I will read off the names in the school, and if you would, meet me down there in front of the podium. And then Rebecca will take a picture that won't turn out half bad, because you'll be in it. I'll be the half-bad part. And if I can ask Ms. Tate to hand these to me after I, as I make my way down, so I don't do too much walking and slow things down. First Teacher of the Year we'd like to recognize is for Cartersville Elementary School, Ms. Cindy Benfield. And the next person to be honored is Ms. Angie Roper, Teacher of the Year, Cartersville Middle School. Ms. Linda Templeton with Cartersville High School. Thank you for your contributions in making our community a better place, and for touching the lives of those kids that are in your care each day. You are welcome to stay and enjoy this council meeting. However, as a lot of your teachers would prefer to do, your students would prefer to do on Sundays, and wish you'd just say, "You can leave class early." We will give you that option. So congratulations again. I will see y'all at the Teacher of the Year luncheon that is sometime in a couple weeks. Tuesday? Okay. Thank you, and congratulations again. All right, let's move on to our first public hearing, de-annexation request AZ 15-02. Richard, if you'll get us started with that, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Second reading, there have been no changes.
Okay. Can you give us a little bit of a description for it for folks who are here? I love the brevity. I love it.
Yes, sir. This property is part of a larger tract owned by the same company that the larger tract is already in the city of Emerson. This smaller tract, 16.28 acres, is proposed to be de-annexed out of the city of Cartersville, and eventually, a proposed annexation application will move that into the city limits of Emerson, so that it'll all be one tract.
Okay. Any questions or discussion, or questions for Richard at this point? Thank you, sir. And I will open up a public hearing relative to file AZ 15-02. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against may do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing relative to AZ 15-02, and put it to council for any further discussion, questions, or actions.
I'll offer a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Item passes unanimously, and we'll move on to AZ 15-03. Mr. Osborne.
Yes, sir. This is another de-annexation application. This is city-owned property, mostly road right-of-way, near the intersection of Old Alabama Road and Pagamine Road, and it would just go back to Bartow County jurisdiction. They're maintaining that area already. Eventually, it will transition into becoming a state route for maintenance purposes, but this land will be de-annexed and will just be Bartow County.
Okay. Any questions or need for Mr. Osborne to give you any more information on this item? All right, then I'll open up the public hearing relative to file AZ 15-03. And once again, anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close that public hearing, and again, turn it over to council for any further discussion or for any action.
Make a motion to approve, Mayor.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We shall move on to the next item, which is the pawn shop ordinance revisions. And Chief Culpeper, if you'll get us started with that, please, sir.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you know, we've been trying to get a system in place with pawn shop dealers, second-hand dealers, scrap dealers, precious metals buyers. That would make it easier for them to report to us their activity, and for us to locate property more easily and return it to the owners when it is discovered as stolen. This is a part of that ordinance that was rewritten by Mr. Lovell that included some changes, and one of them apparently is a change, excuse me, in the fees. And I would ask that you look at that very carefully, because it was our intent to not increase what it costs someone to do business. We, the police department, is willing to cover the cost of the system. We have quotes from two different systems. We are willing to pay for that system, so that it doesn't cost the business anything extra. And so I think we need to look at these fees to see if there's something that is raising that cost to the business owner, because that's not what we wanted. We just wanted to be more efficient in our work without creating a cost increase to the local business. So, you know, we're asking for you to consider this and any changes that you may have. But I just, I don't want to be on the hook for raising costs to a business when it's to our benefit. It seems to be something wrong with that. So, you know, things like the annual fee, where it doesn't require it now. It states that it requires an annual fee of $50. That's just adding more cost every year to the business. And $50 may not sound like much, but you start multiplying that over and over and over, and doing it every year, it can add up, and we understand that. So, we're not about driving costs.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Any questions?
You know, I don't know how about annual, is that a one-time fee you got in there? But, you know, I will say that I doubt seriously if that just popped out of your head without somebody else putting it in. I don't know.
Well, we could get the change.
Yeah, why don't you change it?
And then, I think it's on second reading.
If you don't want, change it back to the original one.
To one time.
Okay. Lori, you have a question?
No, I didn't. I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions on this item? If there are none, again, this is the first reading with ordinance. We will take that up for final consideration on our meeting on May the 21st. I'd mentioned earlier that the next item that's listed on the agenda, we are tabling, because we had some new information come to light that's going to require some further research on the part of the city. So, we will put that off, and we'll move on to the appointment to the Development Authority of Cartersville. Please, Mr. Grove.
Sure. Recommend reappointment of Mike Fields, Brian Edwards, Beth Tilly, to new terms that expire May the 11th, 2019.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Geisler, you've got the next item, please, sir. Erwin Chase Storm Culvert.
As service of Mayor and council, I'm here on behalf of the Public Works Department. I'm asking that you approve a change order. Erwin Chase Culvert Replacement Project. Actually, it's two culverts going under Erwin Street and the Erwin Chase apartment development. Due to additional backfill, proofing of the outlet pipe, additional waterline cap, and additional sod replacement, we're asking for a change order in the amount of $8,469 to completely finish this project.
Okay.
And a one note I did see on here, Tommy mentioned, that makes this change order a bit more palatable. Apparently, the low bidder, excuse me, at $347,192, the very next bidder bid $441,800. So that's a savings of $96,000, if you will look at it that way. I'm glad that the original bidder had his pencil extremely sharp for us.
Thank you. Good point. All right. Any questions for Mr. Geisler on this item? If not, a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jeff. Mr. Jones, I believe you have the next three, please, sir.
Good evening, everyone. We have tonight change order number one for the Jones Mill Sewer Relocation Project. This project was originally authorized by council a little, almost a year ago at $55,000. During construction, there were two issues encountered that ran the price up, resulting in this change order. The first issue was unsuitable fill. The material that was originally under the road was not suitable to replace. It would not achieve proper compaction to hold the new road up, therefore, it had to be replaced. Additionally, while installing the sewer line, rock was encountered in the ditch line, which required an additional piece of equipment to break that rock out of the ditch line and facilitate installing that sewer. The sum of those two changes is a $10,051.50 change order, bringing the total cost of the project to $65,051.50, which is still lower than the next lowest bidder. I don't have an exact figure for you, but I would, I would bet it somewhere close to $20,000 lower than our next bidder. So, we still came out okay on this one.
Okay. Very good. Any questions for Bob on this change order? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on, please, Bob.
Yes, sir. This is related to the same issue. During the initial discovery of the unsuitable material, we quickly realized we were going to have to replace this with rock. The city elected to directly purchase this rock from Vulcan Materials, and the cost of that initial purchase of rock was $6,448.50. So, we would ask your approval of that as well, related to the, to the same project.
Okay.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Continue on, please.
Morningside and Fairview tanks, they are due for an exterior cleaning. This is something we do on a regular basis as a part of maintenance of those structures. This basically is a job of pressure washing the exterior, so that we can inspect the exterior coating and get an idea of whether or not painting or repair is needed. We solicited bids from several contractors, and Hydroforce Pressure Washing Service was the low bidder at $9,810 even, and would recommend your approval of them for this work.
Okay.
May I have a question?
Go right ahead.
Bob, there's one quote in here that's way out of culture. It's very high. Did that vendor perhaps do that to stay on the bid list? Do they, do they need to do that to stay on the bid list?
They don't, no.
They do not?
We simply chose them because they are a national tank maintenance vendor. We have not done work with them in the past. They're a very competent vendor, but obviously, at that price for pressure washing, that's a bit high. So, we would decline their offer.
They just didn't want the job.
They just didn't want the job, yes.
They were hoping nobody else bid on it.
And there, there's a chance, yeah.
Is there any other questions? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Bob, before you step away, I know you had some comments. First of all, I want to commend you about the 36-inch waterline that we replaced. Had to do some cutting and moving. I know that was a stressful time, and it came through fine. I know you wanted to make some comments about it while you're up here.
Right.
If you want to go ahead and speak to that.
Yeah, absolutely. Wanted to take the opportunity to publicly thank several of our local industries that made a huge difference in the way that project went. Bartow County Water Department, Anheuser-Busch, Lindy Gas. They reduced their demand tremendously during that 24 to 48 hours that that project was going on. And it bought us a precious number of hours that allowed us to flush the line, to get the water quality back up to a standard where, honestly, I don't know that anybody even noticed that we were doing anything. If so, I'm not aware of it. We were very concerned, because when we cut this line, it essentially isolated all those industries on a tank that we could no longer fill from the water plant. So, that time meant everything to us, and they were extremely cooperative. And I think it's just a great example of how government and industry can work together to improve everybody if they're given the chance to plan and given the facts in an open forum, and I think we accomplished that here. I know, I'm certainly appreciative of it, and I think everybody in town that didn't have chocolate milk-looking water is appreciative of it as well.
Absolutely. Thank you, and thanks for your comments, and thanks for calling them out. Very well deserved. Job well done. Chief Carter, you have the next item, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Tonight, I bring before you the small equipment package for the two new fire trucks that'll be arriving in June. Previously, we brought a package for you with the self-contained breathing apparatus. This particular package tonight is for the small equipment, which makes up the hose, adapters, and tools, and all the required equipment under NFPA and ISO that will be placed upon the trucks. We sought bids from eight different vendors. Out of the eight vendors, there was one that selected to do a no bid. There were three incomplete bids that came back in. So, we had four good bids. The high bid was at $73,900. The low bid was at $69,827, the other two in between. Tonight, we respectfully request permission to purchase from the low bid for a total cost of $69,827. And this is the equipment that is listed with the attachment that was made for you within the council, as far as the specific equipment that will be bought.
Okay. Any questions for Chief Carter?
I have a question, Mayor. Chief, does this, is there installation with some of this?
Uh, no, because this particular equipment here will be loaded and installed by the firefighters when the trucks actually arrive here in Cartersville. We'll be the one loading the hose, we'll be the one placing the nozzles on the truck, et cetera. So, there is no installation phase.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? If there's none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Chief. Mr. Anderson, you got the next three.
Yes, sir, Mayor and council. A first item is the janitorial supplies for Parks Recreation Department. We annually purchase approximately $14,000 worth of supplies for our restrooms in our park. This, we took solicited bids. I'm recommending the low bid from YPS Holdings of Cartersville. They were low on all items that were, that were chose to be bid on.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Greg.
Yes, sir. This item is for our pool chemicals for all three of our swimming pools. We spend approximately $25,000 a year on these chemicals. This, because of the range of prices, I am recommending that we purchase our Pulsar briquettes from Aquatics Consulting of Alpharetta, our trichlor algicide, meratic acid from Hand Chem of Buford, and all of our remaining chemicals from a local vendor, Green Acres Pools and Spa of Cartersville.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Last one for you, Greg.
Yes, sir. This is a, we solicited, well, first, we looked at several utility vehicles that would do the job, which would, our main function of this was the maintenance of our trail system, since our Pettit Creek Trail goes underwater about four to five times a year. And the Bobcat Toolcat was really the only one that worked for us, the 56G series. It is like a utility vehicle. It is similar to a Bobcat, but it is 3,300 pounds lighter. It uses the same apparatuses that our regular Bobcat uses, such as the bucket, the forklift, but specifically, our broom. But it uses all those, all those equipment, and we don't have to replace those or buy new ones. And I'm recommending the low bid from Bobcat of Atlanta in the bid price of $39,966. This is a budgeted item, and I do believe this would be leased pool.
Okay. Any questions for Greg on this item, and if not, a motion's in order?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Ms. Brock, please, come on down.
All right. Good evening. The electric department would like to award a contract for the inspection repairs on our pad-mounted equipment. The work to be performed was bid out by Electric Cities of Georgia for its member cities in 2013. The low bidder on this work is Southeastern Woodpole Inspectors. Since the contract was bid in 2013, ECG has extended the contract for one year with a 1% price increase. The electric department recommends that we award the contract to Southeastern Woodpole Inspectors, and who is also the low bidder on this project. The work is budgeted and cannot exceed $19,200.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. While you are up here, I'm going to ask council if they would like to add an item to the agenda.
Motion to add. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item is added unanimously. You have a competitive bypass rider that is an emergency reading of an ordinance, correct?
Yes. The electric department is requesting an emergency change to be made to the competitive bypass rider. The competitive bypass rider is a city ordinance that allows us to provide incentives for customer-choice customers. We need to modify the ordinance in order to provide lighting services for special conditions for customer-choice customers. We are requesting an emergency change to the ordinance per Keith Level's suggestion and approval in order to be selective and competitive on customer-choice load projects.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Tamara on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Item is added, or approved unanimously. Thank you, Tamara.
Thank you.
Mr. Porter, you've got the next few.
Yes, Mayor. The first one is computer support renewal agreements. Carousel Industries applies this for us. The two items they have is fire rolls at a cost of $8,339.12. The second item is for extreme switches and wireless equipment at $7,380. These are budget items. Recommend approval of this.
Motion to approve.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
The next item is computer hardware and software purchases. Bartow County has provided us a purchase order to reimburse us for this cost of $182,347.62. They are going to purchase computer hardware and software for New World Software Systems. It's going to help our public safety, as well as Bartow County Public Safety. Our staff has expertise on this hardware and software, and also the discounts. And we actually expect the cost to come in less than that once we negotiate with the vendors.
But we're not actually ultimately paying for this? Is that what I'm hearing?
We're going to get reimbursed 100%.
All right. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Go ahead, Dan. Next item.
Last item, Mayor, I have is the Tabernacle Church release and settlement agreement. Back in January of this year, there was a heavy rainstorm, and they had some flooding in their basement. Part of that, we determined, was a cost when we did the Tennessee Road project. And due to that, we've negotiated a settlement with them to reimburse them, make them whole. The settlement amount is $28,293.24. It'll come out of our property and casualty insurance account we have funding for.
Any discussion on this item?
This is a one-time deal. I understand that we're not buying into any ongoing problems there.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion or questions? Not motions in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for being fast on the trigger, Lori. DOT agreement with the gas department. Mr. Riggs.
Yes, Mayor. A section of our line that has to be relocated for the Tennessee 41 intersection project was on easement, and so we have prior rights, and this is to reimburse us our cost of relocation, relocating that section of line.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Riggs on this item? Not a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Greg, you have the final listed item on the agenda?
Yes, Sir Mayor and council. This has actually been a long time coming. As you're aware, in November of 2014, our citizens voted themselves a tax increase for park improvements. Just under $8 million will be spent towards, on our parks for improvement and replacing buildings. The first item that we will be spending money out of, that will be the choosing of an architect and engineering firm. RFPs were sent out. We received 10 back. Out of those 10, eight were qualified bids. Out of those, our committee, which consisted of 10 individuals, on that committee was also Mayor Santini and Councilman Stell, as well as three citizens that were instrumental in helping with the passage of the bond. They're pro-recreation folks, and they were very enthusiastic about this. This committee chose, out of the eight, we chose three that we received presentations from. Out of those three, there was one that stood out above everyone else. This is Loson Associates. After that was chosen... After that was chosen, Mr. Porta was, did, did negotiation. We were able to cut their price down. And I am recommending, the committee is recommending a, Losen Associates in the amount of as low as $259,500 and a price not to exceed $314,900. And this will be the construction bid sets, the design of, of 10 of our buildings that are all to be either demolished and replaced and/or renovated. And again, this will be the first item that is, will be under contract for the, the spending of our bond money.
So, if this is approved tonight, then you, the negotiations begin with them or is the negotiation already done?
Well, no. The negotiation's already done and, and our committee will decide at that time if we are going to do the one, two, or three bid sets and, and then go from there. Of course, we're going to try to keep it as, as, as low as we can go. But, but yeah, the negotiations are done. They were, we had, the original construction fees came in at $165,000 or $55,000 per bid set. And it was reduced down to, I don't know what those numbers are. It was reduced, it was reduced down to not to exceed $3,750 per month. And if it does go over that, there will be, that will be written into the, our construction contract where if, if it goes over that, it's going to be the contractor's fault because they spent too much time on something or exceeded something. So, language will be written into their contract where they will be paying the overage fees.
Where are these, where's Losen Associates?
They're, 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 they're a southeastern firm all over the southeast, but this firm is located in Lawrenceville, Georgia.
Craig, is there a place that, do you know of a project they've done close by in another county?
Yes, there, there are several projects. They, they, at one time, they were, they were the on-call engineers for Gwinnett County Parks and Recreation. And now, they are now the on-call engineers for Cobb County Parks and Recreation. They have done, they've done several parks for Forsyth County. I've checked, I called all their references. You know, everybody gave glowing remarks about them. They were very impressed with them. And I know this is, you know, we had, we had a wide variety of, of prices ranging from $138,000 to $392,000. And their explanation to the committee and we think that, that the way they work, the way that they're averaged, that they can estimate their, their bid prices, we think that they're going to be able to save us money in the long run to make up for these, for some of these costs.
I will, I will tell you Shaw Park down in Cobb County, they just finished redoing that park. There's a Mud Creek Park that's in the western part of Cobb that is a good example of some of their work. I've been down there. Also, the name of the park in Forsyth that I was at that I, I can't remember the name of it, but it was pretty well done. But I, I will tell you, as Greg mentioned, I think Jace would agree with me, one of the, one of the things that the committee was really impressed with, with their presentation was, you know, so many times when you're designing something, you design it, you kind of just have a rough estimate of what the construction piece is. And so, you can certainly get into a situation where something is designed and then the construction cost is not in line with what your budget is. And they have a very strict procedure that they follow, really, almost like a contractor bid sheet that they give when they're designing the building. That goes into their estimation. So, as Greg mentioned, I think the, the committee was really confident that, that when they submitted their engineering designs, it was backed up with some pretty detailed and specific information about, I mean, material costs and things like that that went into the, the construction piece that would help control costs through the entire project.
In addition to, and I know you can't really put words to what quality is, but you know when you see it, the look of what they proposed. And they also were the only proposer that talked about the possibility of maybe saving pieces of buildings if you could and not completely tearing it down, which appealed to me because there is no sense in completely demolishing a building just to demolish it and then build it back. There are walls that can be made to look better or look new and they'd save those pieces. I, there, you know, I think because of that, there's value in what they do. It may be a little high on the front end, but I think you probably get it back in the project.
And plus, out of all the eight firms that, that we reviewed, RFPs, they were the only, the only true parks and recreation firm. Everyone else, you know, they did school buildings, they did professional buildings. And now, you know, they were, they were good designs, but Los was the only one that was, that are strictly parks and recreation and that also appealed to us. And we, you know, and they, they also provided that, you know, a branding for the parks and recreation to make all of our buildings similar, so.
Any other questions or discussion?
Just to, I want to make sure I understand the scope. So, they're going to handle 10 park buildings? That's all the buildings that we're going to be touching or doing something with or building? Are they going to do like park signage, green space, surrounding areas or something else?
They'll do, they'll do areas surrounding that building, but, but as far as the signage, signage on that building, but any of the other items, the green space items, our, our fencing, our field lights, that'll be done through me. And, and we will, and our shelters, but we will be going back and looking to, we're, you know, we're going to be copying what, what they do. So, you know, so we are alike, so we, you know.
Okay. And again, that 10 building number might change a little bit. Not saying that we would be adding more, but some of what we're wanting to do with some of those buildings is kind of up for discussion. We might even have a way to perhaps save a little bit on the construction piece, in my opinion.
Concerned, I was just curious if there would wind up being another design firm here to do hardscape engineering and park, green space. But it sounds like th- these are our guys and then we'll sort of flow out of their design.
That's, that's correct.
Okay, great.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Just last little question. When, you know, everybody's eager to see this get started, when do you think we'll probably have the first project going?
Uh, well, I...
Make sure they're done right.
Yeah. We're, you know, depending on, you know, how, how the committee wants to do, you know, I, I really don't see us doing three bid sets and stretching this thing out 20 months to the $112,000 for administrative costs. So, you know, it, it's going to be, they will be, they will have their step design and when we choose the, when a construction bids come back to y'all, it'll be, whether it's one, one bid, I can't promise that, but I would say, you know, no more than two. A timeframe, Jace, I, I'd be afraid to say, but, but, but sometime in, in, you know, in the fall, in late fall or when...
The trail system, Lee?
The Leek Mounds.
When is that going to start?
Well, we, we're, right now, we are, we're having to undergo an additional acquisition audit. We had some language in our, in our contract that, that DOT did not accept. So, that's, we'll have to, I'm waiting on DOT to contact us back. And once, once we change that language and whether we have to go back to the property owners one more time for new signatures, I don't know, but everything else is on track. But right now, DOT, our let date for this was supposed to have been the first of May, but the ones that I've been told by DOT, the ones that were supposed to have been let the first of May, DOT still does not have that money. So, we, we are, you know, we're waiting for one more au- for audit.
Can I ask you one question?
What if I say no?
Well, I didn't ask it anyway.
Exactly, so.
Why don't you tell them about the historic preservation award that you got memo on from DOT about Leek Mounds?
DOT, the, the team, this is for the, the Leek Mounds interpretive trail. It was a, I guess, the partnership between private and DOT, or public and DOT. I really don't know what the, what the criteria for that was, but I know it had to be a partnership. But DOT received, or Pam Botman, who is the archaeologist, archaeologist that headed up the, DOT's representative with us, she, you know, she sent an email to me when they received an award. I think Ms. Rebecca's going to be doing an, an article on it. But it was, it was, it was very, very interesting and...
Kind of a national award. And she also said that they had printed up brochures putting, putting in all the...
Yeah, rat cards.
... BIFTA centers and CBB stuff around the state about that interpretive trail.
Wow.
And of course, you know, that, that, that trail, the trailhead of that, we have, we'll have one large trailhead which, which has, which is the Leek Mounds interpretive trail, trailhead, our canoe kayak launch, and then the proposed Leek Mounds, the, the DOT, the Leek Mounds trail for that. So, it'll be that, that west side of town will, is going to be a very, very busy place. Very well used.
That's great.
Thank you. Anything else?
That for me.
Okay. Well, good. Then the chair will entertain any motions because we're in the midst of...
I'll be out to adjourn.
We need to, we need to take action on this.
Let's do that. Let's do that. What do people get?
I'll make motions. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Greg. Is there any other business that needs to come forward, council, this evening? If there is none, just a quick note to council. I'd asked you a couple weeks ago if you would submit some information to me about one of our council visioning notes was to give the downtown development authority direction is kind of a strange, I guess that's, what your vision is for how, what projects or what areas of focus you'd like the DDA to be more involved with. I'll be addressing their group on May 21st. So, if you will submit those to me so that I can pass your comments on to them. And as a public service announcement, in case you don't know, Sunday is Mother's Day. So, if you haven't gotten something for your mother yet, shame on you. And, and a happy Mother's Day to all those, those mothers. Yeah, I thank, yeah. I was calling out Bonnie and Max on that one. If there's no other business that needs to come forward, council, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Submerge.
Good. It is not... Get her up.